Welcome to the Pathways Podcast where we explore the unique journeys and key moments along the way that have shaped the lives and careers of our guests and where we also discuss culture, tastes, and time honored traditions that help define who we are. So Bill Slaughter Chairman of County Commissioners, excited to have you and glad you're here, sir.
Glad to be here, John. Thank you.
And just wanted to start with where you are and what you're doing now?
Yeah.
What led you to get involved in public service?
Well, some folks says it's temporary insanity. That's what I tell a lot of folks, but no, through my business, Waller heating and air that I was very fortunate to be a part of, a family owned business, I was very much involved with the construction trades in our associations statewide, locally as well. And so through that advocating for them and needs that they had, I began to get involved with working with local elected officials to try to work on issues that we may have, not only local, but certainly our state officials as well. So I began to do that and then I got a call one day, actually that really was the trigger. I got a call one day from Myrna Ballard, Chamber President, and she asked me if I would serve on a committee that was working with the city of Allad Austin, and of course, Lounes County at that time, basically helping some of the business regulations that we had to kind of make things a little bit easier to do business in our community with. So I accepted the position and I went to, went to, went to work. I say work, I mean, it was volunteer, there's no pay there, but to help working with some of the regulations that we had that we were trying to address. And we did that, we worked through that. Well, and through that process, I just, I guess I got the bug, I reckon. And I just began to think about that I might have that opportunity. And the opportunity came up was when Lounes County for years had three commissioners that served. They were going to expand the commission from three commissioners to five commissioners. And so I decided that I would run for, currently is now District Five, which is the district that I lived in. Well, at that point in time, I needed to find out a little bit about what I was getting into, you know, really, because I just didn't have a clue. So Ashley Polk, a good friend of mine, Sheriff of Lounes County now, he was the current chairman at that time. And so I called Ashley and I said, I need to come talk to you. I'm thinking about running for this, this District Five seat and I'd like to get some advice. Just tell me what I'm getting into. So I go and sit down with him like 5:00 in the morning over at his office. He's like me, you start it early, you know. So we sit down and we were having a good conversation about it and he was explaining to me about all that it took. And then, then through that process, he just kind of paused a minute and he said, well, Bill, he said, you'd make a good commissioner. Well, I said, oh, he's got somebody else. Somebody else has already been talking to him, you know, so he's breaking it to me easily. Well, he said, you'd make a good, a good commissioner, but he said, I think you'll make even a better chairman. And I said, wow. I said, well, you're the chairman and I didn't know what his plans were. He said, well, my plans are, I'm not going to run. And he said, I think you'd be a perfect chairman. And he said, I think that's what you should think about. So I said, well, you know, that's a whole, that's going to take on a whole lot more praying than what I've been praying for this. So I need to know a little bit more about it and I need to go back and talk to certainly, you know, Cindy, my wife and the boys and family and all and say, okay, this is, this is kind of what this thing's evolved into. So anyway, so I went and talked to them and then I went back and talked to Ashley one more time. And Ashley and I joke about this. He says, Bill, listen, it's no problem. He says, I come in, do my business here, my business, and then I'll go down there about 8:30. I'll spend about 45 minutes with them and I'm done. I said, well, that's okay. I could do that, you know, that's pretty easy work. I can take 45 minutes to an hour out of the day. Well, he weren't quite truthful with me, you know, but now he jokes and says, well, I'm just a whole lot more efficient than you are. I could get that much done in 45 minutes than what it takes you all day to do. Well, and so we have fun with it. But bottom line is, that's how I got, that's how I made that decision that I would run for public office was with encouragement from folks in the community that felt like that I had the abilities to do it. And again, you know, I'd done a lot in the business that we had, the community and customers that we've had for years had always been good to me. And we'd worked hard and we were already, already very community minded as far as our business. And so I just felt like that it was time for me really to give back to the community. I know it's an old cliche, but that's honestly what it amounted to. But I didn't have a clue what I was getting into. I just knew that it was an opportunity to represent the citizens of this community. And so I put myself out there, made the decision I would run for the county chairman. I was successful. And that was in 2012, that campaign year. And then 2013, I took office January 1st of 2013. And I had opposition that first year, but I've had not had any opposition in my last two terms. And so now this term, I made a decision and we can get into a little bit of that later. It was personal stuff that I had to deal with, but had got through that. And so I finally made the decision that I would run for a fourth term. And I was getting again encouraged by folks that wanted me to, to do it. And so I decided I would after some life changing issues had taken place. And so I'm currently running and I do have opposition this, this term, and I'm taking it very, very serious. I mean, I'm here to represent the citizens of this community. So you'll see my signs. I've been out putting out signs and it's just part of campaigning, you know, your dad understands that here. He knows what that's all about, serving on the school board. So again, it's, it's always been my honor and my pleasure to serve the citizens of this community. And I very much would desire to continue to do that.
Obviously, we want to learn the rest of your story too, because that's what this is all about. And you're, you could probably create three episodes with your story if we had enough time. But I'd love to learn a little bit more about what you expected after that meeting with Ashley and winning the election?
Yeah.
And what the difference was between expectation and reality as you've served?
Well, you know, again, I think that, I say this all the time, if you're going to make a decision as to run for public office, you need to do it with the right heart and the right mind. You don't need to go in there with an axe to grind, you know, I'm mad about this, I'm going to go in there and change this, because that's really not what it's all about. It's the big picture. It's about what your community is like. And I absolutely had no axe to grind. I just felt the desire. I wanted to serve. I wanted to be a part of this community. It'd been so good to me that I wanted to give back as much as I could. So when I got, when I got into office and got elected, I mean, I was, I was, I had that deer in the headlights, you know, I mean, my eyes was wide open and I had no clue about what I was getting into. But I had, what I did have is I had some good commissioners that were already in place. I had some good commissioners that were coming in, those two new commissioners, as well as a wonderful staff at the county. And so when you look at everything that, that was there, you look at the finances, you look at what, and have conversations with these people and one specifically Joe Pritchard, you know Joe? And Joe is as good a county manager as you'll ever find. And he's just down to earth. He puts his head down. He went right straight to work. And that's the type of people I like. I mean, that was my business mind. I mean, let's get, we got a job to do, let's get in there, let's get it done. And so Joe and I, we hit it off really well. And he was a big part of that. And certainly now Paige Dukes is our current county manager. She was the clerk at that time. And you know, I say all the time, I could never tell who was the referee between the three of us, whether it was Paige trying to referee between Joe and I, or me refereeing, refereeing between Joe and Paige. But it was unique to watch that magic and how it would work when you've got three good people there that's got a really a heart for this community. And how you have an issue that you want to resolve and then how those three things, the six hands and they're molding this thing to get it to where you want it. And when it finished product, it's just what the citizens need.
Yeah.
And so again, that my expectation was really, I didn't, like I said, I didn't have an axe to grind. I really didn't see a problem that had to be fixed. I had a few things. I knew we had to have better communication between the city and the county. I wanted to get that accomplished. I knew we had some infrastructure issues that we needed to work on and continue to grow those and continue to resolve those. And so that's just a few things that I, that I wanted to make a purpose. When I came in at that time, the same year that I was running Splosh at that time, I believe it was Splosh Seven, for the first time, Splosh had failed in Lounes County. And it failed because the project list just wasn't the right project list. And so one of the things I had to really focus on because Splosh was so important, I had to focus on, let's, let's get that project list revamped. Let's get the right project list that the citizens can, can accept and that they would enjoy. And then they would support it. That's what we did. They supported it and we got Splosh back again the following year.
Picking up on two things you said there, the relationship with the city. We, we had the mayor in just a couple of weeks ago and discussed the relationship between the city and the county and how, at least from the outside looking in, it looks extremely positive and continues to grow in a good way. Speak to that, kind of what progress has been made.
Again, when I first came in, again, that was one of my goals is I wanted that relationship to improve and to be better because at that time, there was a lot of things that was going on that with the spin was, was that the city and the county just didn't get along.
Right.
And you can still hear some of that, you know, and it, it, it's not as factual as a lot of people like to think it is. When I came into office, my good friend, John Gale was the mayor at that time. And so John and I went to work together and there was a lot of things that we wanted to get accomplished that we needed to work together on. And we'd done just that. We worked on. And then of course, when John decided not to run, Scott James decided that he would and he became mayor and he and I worked close together. So again, the difference is, and I say this a lot, cities are created by charters. And so they work off of a charter. Counties are created by the constitution. And so we have certain things that we're responsible for. Cities have certain things that they're responsible for as well. Most all the time, we can work together for the benefit of both, but there's some things that just totally separate us. And one of the biggest things that we've always had between us that folks would know, it's called SDS and that's an acronym for the Service Delivery Strategy. And it comes down to money sometimes. And it, it comes down to who's going to do this, what's the processes and the procedures and all that. And sometimes that can get a little contentious to work that, work through that process. And it does, I'll be honest, we did last, the one we just finished, it took us seven years to work through that. Two mayors, I had to work through two mayors. John started with John, ended up with Scott on getting, getting that done. But we got it across the finish line. And it's something that's good for everybody in the community. And it's something that we all could live with. But really, that's the only thing that we differ about was that document itself. And it basically just said, who's going to do what and who's going to pay for this and who's going to pay for that. And certainly, there's a lot of work that goes into that and you have to put a lot of consideration in those things. And you have to also understand that, that county commissioners also represent folks that live in the city because we're all Lounes Countyans.
That's right.
You know, and they vote for you as well. So you, we have an obligation to look after the folks in the city as well. But typically, citizens live in your municipalities because they're looking for a higher level of service. Your density's a little bit higher, but you're closer to healthcare, you're going to have better fire protection. But that has all changed. Last census, the unincorporated area of Lounes County grew by almost 10%. The cities didn't quite grow that much. So it tells us that folks are, were moving out into the unincorporated area. So it puts a lot of pressure on local, on our commissioners because we've got rezoning cases that's coming up for development, all those sort of things. Those things can be positive, they can also be negative. So it's just a big combination of things that we have to look at. And as these folks are growing into the unincorporated area, they are also looking for a higher level of service.
Right.
You know, so we have to begin to look at that. We have to have better roads. We have to look at our fire, which we can get into that. I mean, we've expanded the fire service in the unincorporated area. We used to be pretty much a volunteer system, but now we have paid fire, firemen in, in four stations at this point. And we've got plans for two more stations that's going to be located, one on the west side and one down at Lake Park. And when we do that, we'll have this whole county covered and we'll have full time firemen scattered throughout. And that's, and that's a sense. It'll help lower the ISO rating, but at the same time, it'll give citizens in our community a much higher level of comfort knowing that we can respond and respond quickly.
Right.
But your, your success and track record reputation has expanded to the state level and beyond.
It has.
And that's led to some opportunities in leadership at the state level. Share with us your recent opportunity that you've been blessed with.
Well, and it is a blessing. And it's one that I've really, I've got a learning curve. But it is, it's, it's called a DBHDD and this is the Behavioral Disabilities and Developmental Disabilities. And so it's the state board that oversees that. It's quite challenging. There are a lot of needs out there. You, you know yourself, Jeremy has a family with a special needs child, wonderful, wonderful young man.
Blessing in itself. That's right.
Really is. I mean, he's a blessing. He really is. But you know, there are those kids with those same needs that just doesn't have the same opportunities that he has with family that I'm not, I hate to say that family that doesn't love him, but maybe family that doesn't have the resources to be able to provide. So we have to look at somewhere where those options, you know, where those opportunities are going to come at. You know, without getting too deep into things, you know, I have thought a lot about this shooting in Winder, to bring that up. You know, that kid has got to pay a price. He did something as bad as anybody could imagine to do that. But if the reports and everything are going on like you, like they're being told at this point, that young man had been screaming for help, screaming for help, but nobody saw it. We've got to do something in this country that will begin to help you and I to be able to recognize that there's an individual there that's going through some sort of mental crisis.
Right.
So that we then can have the strength in our hearts and in our minds and courage to be able to say, somebody needs to get on this because there's a problem here.
Right.
I mean, that child, DeFacts, wasn't in the home. There was nothing there. And apparently it was bad actor parents that really was kind of driving this. And you know, there's so many different facets to it. I'm not trying to defend the child because he's as guilty as he could be. And again, he'll spend the rest of his life paying the price for what he done. And that will not bring back those four individuals that lost their lives that day. But bottom line is, how can we prevent this from happening in the future? Can we prevent it by putting in tighter regulations so that these, this doesn't happen? I'm not really sure that that's the best way. I think one of the best ways that we can do it is to, is to put things in place that's going to give us educators, administrators, mom and dad, neighbors, that it's going to give them the opportunity and the resources and the tools to recognize that there's a problem here and somebody needs to get involved. And then you got to have the courage to say, mom and dad, there's a problem, we're going to get involved. And we're going to find, we're going to get this, this fixed. And I think that that's the only way you're going to be able to solve some of those issues.
I'm glad to hear you kind of hit on this and we'll, we won't spend too much time on it, but maybe we can get a status report down the road as you spend more time on that, on that commission. But I would say, having gone through that myself, one of the biggest issues is just knowing where to start.
Yeah.
There's no clear roadmap of if this is your situation, here's what you need to do step by step to maximize the opportunity for the person you're trying to serve, right?
That's right.
And, and that's, you know, with me and the whole family working together to try to maximize that, you really have to figure it out on your own.
Well.
And so to create a, to create a resource where you then could communicate to the community, this is how you maximize the resources that your tax dollars are paying for.
Yeah.
And then it'll make our community better, safer and stronger.
I would agree with that. And there should be some form or some area for a repository of some sort where parents that, that finds theirself in that situation can go to and get that help that they need.
That's right.
You know.
It's never going to be perfect.
No, it never will be.
But you do want to maximize the services.
Child is just as sweet as he can be. There's not a violent bone in him. But there's some out there though, that from a behavioral standpoint, they're really struggling and we got to find a way. We just going to have to find a way to, to get to these kids and these young adults. And then you've got all the addictions that we've got that we have to deal with as well. It's just terrible out there.
Well, I know we're going to switch to some entrepreneurship conversation, but before we do, you know, just as you're talking and knowing you for as long as I have and the servant heart that you have, knowing that everything you've just said is purely authentic. But the leadership that you've provided is, I think, a testament to how service starts in the community, right? You don't have to be elected official to be a public servant.
Absolutely.
And too often, I think in our communities, we're waiting for somebody else to do it.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
So I commend you for, for following through and stepping up because I know you've had a lot on your plate.
Yeah. Well, and of course, I, mine really has to start back from the standpoint, you know, my relationship with my father-in-law. He had the same servant heart for his community. Of course, he really focused on them Wildcats across town.
We had fun conversations about it.
That's right. That's right. But he, I mean, he loved them. And so he put his heart and soul into it. But that was part of, you know, he was involved in the community and and through the, when he started that business in 1963, then he, you know, he felt like that the right thing to do was to support the community. And so when David and I took it over in 1991, we continued with that because it was important. Now, a little bit different, we probably tried to share the love a little bit more than what he did. You know, we supported the other team across town just as much as we did the Wildcats. But bottom line is, is that, that's, he was my mentor and I owe everything to him that got me started as far as basically even in my entrepreneur life, you know, I, I tell a story a lot about mine and his relationship. It was, it was certainly a father-in-law and a son-in-law relationship. And it wasn't always positive, you know, I knew I had to do my job and I had to work hard. But I had to tell him one time, he was talking about an exit strategy and what his plans was. And I just told him, because I had it in my heart and I just, you know, that's the only way I know how to do it. It's just say what it is. And I told him, I said, you know, I love you. I appreciate every opportunity you've given me. I said, but I can either be a part of your business or I can be your toughest competition because I'm going to, I'm going to do this, you know, I'm going to, for benefit of my family, I'm going to work hard and I will either be a part of your business or I'll, you know, I'll be your competitor. Because that's just what I felt like, you know, I felt like that's where we needed to go. Because he had instilled that into me as much as anything.
Say, he probably respected that.
He did. He did. Because he'd been in the same place.
Yep.
Because when he came up, he was working for another company here in town that he loved and had put 10 or 15 years in. And then he made the decision because he couldn't come be a part of that business, he made the decision to go into his own business. And so again, I was in that same position. And so I honestly do believe that he respected that. He respected that decision that I was making. And so he made me an offer that I could have refused, but I weren't that stupid. And so, and so I, I accepted it and I just stuck, put my head down and went to work. I had to learn the business side of it. I knew a lot about the technical side because that was the world that I had come up with him. And I worked hours and hours and hours with no pay. I mean, that's just the way you did it back then. There was no, well, I'm working overtime, I'll get open. No. This is what you get paid and this is, you take however much time it takes to get the job done. And then when you get through, then you're finished, you know, you can go home. Well, I went, you know, I did the same thing he did. I saw him work hard and worked long, long hours. And, and really his, his family would sacrifice because he'd worked those long hours. And mine did the same thing. There was no doubt about it. I was blessed with, same way his family, you know, is that they understood that in order to be able to, to have things and to do better than dad was going to have to do this. And so my family did the same thing. They embraced it and they understood it. Certainly Cindy understood it better than anybody because she came up through it. So again, it was long hours and you know, early morning leaving at four, five o'clock in the morning, going to the office and working till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. You know, I even tried putting an office in at my house to where I could do drawings and calculations and stuff there. And it would work for a while, but you were still in your office. You weren't with your family.
That's right.
But those things just have to be done. And anybody that has, starts a business, they understand that. That's all part of that entrepreneurship. It's not a eight to five. If you think you can go to work at eight and go home at five, it's just, you're not going to be successful. You know, you have to live it, breathe it, think about it 24/7. So I had that opportunity with him. He retired in 91 and David and I took control of the business at that point. And then went through those years, we grew the business because we had to grow the business, having to pay him.
Right.
So we had to grow the business for us to see a dollar of profit. So we grew the business. And then David and I had a really, David, my brother-in-law, we had a really good relationship and Cindy worked right there in the business. We didn't have to worry about the office. She handled that. So that was a lot of pressure off of me. And so again, it was just, we had a good team, you know, it's just like y'all have a good team.
Right.
So we, we got through that. And then I decided after 2018, I was fixing to be 62. So I made a decision that I would retire. And I made the decision I was going to retire because my two sons, Chad and Josh, they'd been working in the business for close to 20 years at that point, you know, and so it was time. It was just time for me to back away. It was time for David to back away and let the next generation come in and take it over, learn from what their grandfather and what David and I had been able to teach them. And then take it to the next step, the next level, the opportunity they have. So I made that decision and it ended, well, actually during the year 2017. And then I actually pulled the trigger on it and retired from the business in 2018. Had a five-year exit strategy. It's kind of how I put it together. So I'm beyond that now. And so I'm totally divested from the company. They have it. It is their business now and very proud of them and the great work that they're doing. It's the third generation. And so now we've got other family members that's coming along. And so hopefully we'll have a fourth generation that'll continue that business. I could have done something with that business. David and I could have sold that business and we would have been at the bank. I mean, we could have really done well, but that's not what I wanted. I wanted it to stay in the family. I wanted it to be a community business with people that understood their community, loved the community and was willing to reinvest into the community. And that's, the boys do that too. So I'm real proud of them on that.
Well, one thing, it's real unique that we have in Allad Austin, Lounes County. I mean, think about this yourself, talk about Sheriff Polk and Scott James, same way, all entrepreneurs, all people who've owned their own business, who've, who's been, made a very large impact on our community as entrepreneurs. And now we're making that same impact as public service. And, and so I'll say this, thank you, man. You have, you have done well and, and served our community and our county. I told you before, we started rolling, I don't know how you do it. You're so, you're, you, you put your heart and soul into it, just like you did with Waller.
Yeah.
You're doing the same thing.
Well, that's the only way you can do it. That's the only way I understand. It's the only thing I know. And there's no half getting into it. And I will say this, that was part of the reason also for me to make that decision for my exit strategy because in my heart and in my mind, I couldn't put 110% effort in the business and I couldn't put 110% because there weren't enough to go around. So I had to, I had to begin to make some decisions. The boys were ready to step up. And so from my standpoint, the citizens of this community elected me for this position. So I really needed to focus on this job. And so that's, that's part of that decision. And it's just, at the end of the day, it's the right thing to do. And, and I never regret it from, at all.
It strikes me that, you know, as you mentioned, Mr. Waller Senior, man, what a legacy.
Oh, absolutely.
And then, but, but you and Cindy and David Jr. working together to continue that legacy. And now it's being carried forward by Chad and Josh. And, and you don't see that as much anymore.
No.
Multi-generational family businesses because it gets tempting to cash out on occasion, right?
Oh, it was.
Because you, but you, and you were talking about how, you know, you, you took the business home, right?
Yeah.
But even without that office at home, you know, as an entrepreneur, you never leave the business.
No.
Right?
No.
But one thing that, that impresses me about your story is it doesn't seem like you ever let it become your identity. It wasn't who you were.
Yeah.
And speak to that. And even now, you know, you're, you're chairman, but.
Yeah.
You're Bill.
Well, that's purposely because it allows me to keep myself grounded. I don't ever want to get to a point of where I think I'm the chairman of Lounes County. You know, I mean, even my staff, honestly, my staff, and they will tell you, the staff up at the county, when, when I, if I send an email out to them or a question or text or what have you, it's Bill. It's not Chairman Slawn.
Right.
They call me chairman. I don't ever call Bill chairman, you know, because that's, that's the honor that they give me for that position. So they do that. But you keep yourself grounded.
Yeah.
You realize that what you're doing here is not for you. I'm not doing this for Bill. You know, I could do a whole lot more things for Bill and I have a whole lot more fun at it. But what I'm doing is, is what I'm doing is, is, you know, my, my, my hopes and my prayer is, is that the decisions that's being made now while I'm here and while I'm in this position. is that the decisions that's being made now while I'm here and while I'm in this position, history will look back and say, you know, it was some pretty good years.
Right.
For Lounes County. They did a lot of good things. They don't have to say Chairman Slaughter did it.
No.
They just have to say that it was a good time for Lounes County, we got a lot of stuff accomplished.
Sure.
I don't need a building named after me, I don't need a road named after me, those things don't mean anything to me. What means the most to me is that this community is as, as good as it can possibly be, so that the citizens that live here has a high quality of life, uh, they have a wonderful place to raise their families.
Right.
And that, to me, it's just God's green acres. I mean, that's just what it is right here in Lounes County.
Well, and, and to, you know, kind of piggybacking off what Jeremy said with your identity, I mean, you think about that, you're on the third generation now of the heating and air business, your sons wanted to follow in your footsteps. That says a lot about you.
Yeah.
You, you know, although you had to work a lot of hours, you had to bring it home sometimes, they looked at Dad and said, hey, I wanna be like him, I wanna follow in those footsteps. So that says a lot for.
Well, it does. It makes me extremely proud, you know, that that was, because like you said, that doesn't happen in a lot of families, you know, a lot of families. I mean, you look at it, whether it be in agriculture, whether it be as an entrepreneur in any business, a lot of the children just say, look, I don't want none of that. I don't wanna have to do what daddy done, you know, I don't, I, I, I'm gonna do something different. A- and that's fine if that's what they decide, but it says a lot for the family, I feel like, and for that focus that, that, that generation after generation understands what this business is doing, that they're focused the same way, they understand that it's, you know, part of it is a give-back, it's not all a take, and it should be that way.
Right.
And then when that happens, good things are gonna come your way. I just believe God's always gonna bless me, you know, because I'm, I feel like in my heart, I'm doing the right thing. Now, sometimes maybe I don't, you know, we all make bad decisions and it goes south on us. But bottom line is, is that if you're doing it for the right reason, and you have God in your heart as you plan it, then, then it, it, it normally is gonna work out pretty good for you.
That's right.
Well, and the thing to, you know, and you see it again, just like with, with Sheriff Polk saying, hey, I think you'd make a good chairman.
Yeah.
Is, you, you, you know, it's building upon, you know, that legacy, and, and I'm, I'm, it, it's my hope for Lounes County and about us, so that we continue to build on that legacy. Keep, keep picking people like you years and years and years down the road.
And, and that's right, and that's the key, you know, as much as anything, is that, you know, it's up to you folks to make, that makes those decisions at the, at the ballot box about who is going to represent you. And, and when you have that opportunity, and when I'm gone, uh, then, and you have that opportunity to elect the next chairman, it doesn't need to be just a popularity contest. You really need to understand where that individual's heart's at, and what they're trying to accomplish, and it doesn't need to be that person that comes in there with an ax to grind, because maybe they did a rezoning case didn't go the way they wanted it to go, you know?
Yeah.
You need a person that wants to come in, that truly wants to grow your community. It was a bit selfish for me, because from our heating and air business, if it, if the community's growing, the business is growing.
Sure.
In all honesty, so we all, you know, as the old saying is, you know, rising ships floating, you know, all right, whatever, however, just however it goes.
Rising, rising, raises all ships.
I get tangled up with that sometimes.
Between the three of us, we'll get it right.
Yeah, we'll figure that. We'll get it, we'll get it right. But I, but absolutely, I mean, we all, we all rise to the occasion, and we all come up together when, when we're working together.
Yeah. It hasn't been without challenges, though.
Never is.
Um, if you'll allow, I, I'd love for you to share some of your personal journey. We've talked about your public service as chairman, and now at the state level. We've talked about the, the wonderful legacy that you continued and now passed on at, at Waller Heating and Air, but, um, you know, you and Cindy were married for a long time. Um, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear the story about how you met, and, um, and if you will, just share with us, um,
I'll try.
what, what that was like.
I'll try.
I'm with you.
When we met, Cindy was still in high school. And I was just a runny kid, you know? I actually had a cousin of mine introduce us. Called me one day and said, got somebody I want you to meet, she's gonna be down at Cherry Lake, and, and can you come down, we'll ski and what have you, what have you. So anyway, I get down there, and of course Cindy, you know, she was an athlete in high school.
Oh, yeah.
So she was, um, they were trying to teach her how to ski, they was about to drown her. So when I met her, she, when I met her, she was just soaking wet, you know, I mean, and, and so it was really kind of a high and a bye time thing, you know, and she was going off to softball practice, so she had to leave. So, anyway, I just, you know, I hem-hawed around, and two weeks later, I thought about it, I said, well, I'm gonna call that young lady and ask her out. Well, again, the fun little story about it, I called, uh, I called her and asked her out, and it just happened to be her daddy's fortieth birthday party.
Oh, wow.
And he had some of his very close friends over at his house, and they were over there, and so Cindy goes in and says, they tell me this story, this part of it later, but Cindy called, goes in there and said, Daddy, this, this young man's asking me out for a date, can I tell him yes? And he says, who is he, you know? She, he didn't know me from a hill of beans, I'm from up there in Hayhire somewhere, and you know, he didn't know me from nobody. And that was his story. So I don't know, I don't know who this guy is, you know, who this young man is. Well, his friends, fortunately for me, and again, God was just looking out for me, if, they said, well, David, if you don't let her go out with him, you'll never know who he is.
Oh.
You know, so evidently, he said yes. And so we had a date the next weekend, so we went out and once we started going out, we, we went out for fifty-six and a half years. Uh, I mean, sorry, forty-six and a half years. Worked side by side in a business every day, um, learned how to do that, and still learned how to have a family and a family life. Uh, when you're working in a business, it's not easy. You know, it's like I said, she ran the, we, we all had to understand to make things work, that everybody had their, their expertise, and then you kind of stayed out of everybody else's wheelhouse, and let everybody do what they were able to do. Cindy, we're in the office. That was her job, and so I said, you run the office. I can go back in that warehouse and talk to these guys like they need to be talked to sometime, but I can't come up here and talk to these ladies like that. So you handle all this sort of stuff. So anyway, that's what we did, and, and we've done that for one, you know, for a long, long time, and then all of a sudden, um, in, um, twenty-two, uh, she got diagnosed with cancer.
I know how you feel.
And, uh, eight months later, she went to be with the Lord. Nothing we could do about it.
Right.
That was tough, tough on the family. But, uh, like everything else, you put your head down.
Yeah.
You move on, you realize it was God's plan. Nothing we could do. Um, got, you know, we lost her on July the sixth of twenty-two. And then, uh, again, this old fool, God just keeps looking after him. That's all I can say. You know, God brought another lady into my life, um, since that time.
That's right.
And, um, I, there's, I'd tell anybody that Cindy would approve. One hundred percent. You know, and I'm happy, I'm in a good place.
Yeah. You know, you're in a unique position.
I still miss you.
Bill, yeah. In, in our line of, of work, we have the ability to help and serve people at all stages of life.
Yeah.
And walk people through these kinds of, of transitions, and it's never easy. But one of the, the challenges that I hear a lot is when people get to that, you know, call it the third chapter of life, if you will, right? The third quarter.
Yeah.
Um, maybe you've retired from your primary vocation, dealing with illness, loss.
Yeah.
This under, this stalemate almost of, of struggling with identity and purpose and, and trying to find it again. I had a conversation just last night with a gentleman about this very same thing, and he's, he's saying, I'm trying to figure out what's next.
That's right.
And I, I think you have such a, um, powerful story of how, how'd you put it? You just keep going.
Yeah.
It's the next step.
That's all you can do.
You get up in the morning, you, you turn it over to the Lord.
That's right.
You trust him.
Yeah.
And you do everything you can to do according to his will.
Yep. You know, I would tell everybody, I'd get up in the morning, put my feet on the floor, put my smiley face on and go about my day. Uh, but when you got home, again, that's when it would hit you.
Yeah.
Saddest moment, saddest time you can have, because the one that you love and the one that you lived with.
Yeah.
You look over there and they're not there anymore.
Right.
It's hard.
It, it's also a beautiful testimony of how God creates space.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Space for you to, to love more.
Sure.
And again.
Sure.
Right? Uh, space for you to serve and continue to serve through it all.
Right.
You, you had a difficult choice to make.
I did.
What led you to the decision that you have made, number one, to be remarried?
Yeah.
Uh, number two, to run again?
Yeah.
With, because you could choose to ride off into the sunset.
Sure. Well, I had, when Cindy got ill, um, I knew that even in the best-case scenario, uh, she was gonna, she was gonna take my time. I mean, I was gonna have to put one hundred percent of my time with her. Uh, because even in the best-case scenario, her quality of life really wasn't gonna be very good.
Right.
She couldn't, from since the surgery, she couldn't eat, um, and, um, so I had, I fed her five times a day, threw a feeding tube. Uh, she couldn't talk, so the communication was all written, you know, we, that's how we communicate. I, I, she can hear me, I talk, but then she'd communicate back to me by writing on my little pad that she had. So I just knew that, I just knew that there was no way that, that I could be the chairman, because my primary responsibility at that point was with her.
That's right.
You know, and, and so, um, moved forward in that direction and, and then I had already kind of been putting the word out, you know, that I wasn't going to seek reelection. Um, and then, of course, she passed, and we didn't expect that. I really, we really didn't. We really thought that she was turning the corner, and that she, this cancer was bad, and like I said, her quality of life was never gonna be what it was, but that I would have her, and we, we, the family would have her. Um, but it just, when it turned, it turned real quick, and, um, cancer just went everywhere and, and we lost her. Um, and had to make it difficult decisions there. Those were hard decisions to make. You know, when a doctor, well, I had to ask the doctors that last time I had her at the hospital, and team of doctors was in there, and I said, let, you know, I just need somebody to be honest with me. What, what are we facing? And this doctor just steps up and he says, Mr. Slaughter, you don't have but two options. That's never good. You know, he says, you can, we can put her on a ventilator and keep her here a while longer, or we can let, make her comfortable and she'll peacefully pass. It didn't take me but just a second or two.
That's right.
To make that decision. Struggled with that a lot, you know, was it the right decision? Because it, it had to be.
Sure.
Um, and so that's the decision I made, and twenty-four hours later, she, she was gone. Um, but again, what she done and what the mark she's left in our family will never go away.
Right.
You know, and, and so it's, I'm just blessed beyond measure that God has seen a way to give me her for those years, and the love that we had for each other. Um, and, and then at the same time, after I lost her, I guess, understanding the need that I needed companionship, I needed somebody else in my life. I needed to be able to, at night, to talk to somebody about all these other things.
Right.
Then Jan, the Lord brought Jan to me, and so we, we ended up getting married. Um, and, and so at that point, then, I, I began to make the decision. I said, you know, I still got some time now.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can still serve the, the citizens of Lounes County, and I was, I had them, a lot of them asking me, you know, to continue, and so, uh, I made the decision then, that I, and it was kind of late, but I made the decision that I would, uh, I would go ahead and seek another term. So that's how I got to this point right here now. And so, um, I'm kind of dragging Jan through all this now. She, she's been a real trooper, she's, she's enjoying it, she's a retired educator, and, and so she's still involved, involved a lot with her association with educators and all that, so she understands the political side of things as well, and so she's, uh, she's been a good, she's been a good partner, doing, doing a great job.
Well, she's always got a smile on her face, so you must be doing something right, and, and she had lost her husband.
She has.
Well, around the same time?
Uh, about four months earlier.
Four months.
Yeah. Yeah, they were in a terrible accident on the side by side, they were hit from behind, and, and he was ejected from it and, and broke his neck, and he passed. About five days later, I think, down at Shands.
Well, let me ask you this, because I see you guys a lot, you know, going out to concerts, and I know you love to fish. Tell us a little bit about Bill, what he likes to do in his spare time.
Well, that's just it. Uh, Bill loves to go to, we've got a place down at Keaton Beach, uh, down in the Big Bend area of Florida down there, and it's called, down there on the grass flats, so we redfish and trout fish. Jan loves to fish as well, and that's really the story of how we met, was kind of through that process. Um, and so, um, we love doing that, she loved going to concerts. I never really had time to go to concerts, and it just wasn't a thing that I did. I might have went to three concerts in my lifetime.
Wow.
Uh, but then she liked, she enjoys them, and so I said, sure, find me a, we'll go. And so we started going to a few concerts when we had the opportunity to do that, and so, uh, I have enjoyed it. Uh, but I enjoy as much as anything, just being with her. You know, that, building on a new relationship, letting God be part of molding that relationship. And, and that's what we do. Our little story with our church, you know, I'm a member at First Baptist Church, she's a member at Lakeview Baptist Church up in Cook County. We have a dilemma. What are we gonna do about church? God, again, just works miracles. As you know, First Baptist adjusted their time. So we get out of, we get out of Sunday school at First Baptist Church, we go there, we're in class with your mom and dad.
That's right.
Family, and your grandmother. But we go there, and so we go to Sunday school at First Baptist Church, and then it get, we get out of there, and we've got exactly forty-five minutes to drive all the way up to the edge of Tiff County to walk into the sanctuary at her church. And normally, we get there about three minutes till, and we can walk in up there, and so we go to service, uh, at worship service at her church. So we both are still sharing the two churches, because my church and her church has made it very, very clear that neither one of us are leaving our churches. So, again, God worked it out by First Baptist adjusting their time, that thirty minutes just made all the difference in the world. All the difference for us, it just laid it out, and we said, yep, here it is, God just keeps working, keeps working for us. Yeah.
Well, well, tell us a little bit real quick about the, or take as much time as you want, but how you guys met, how fishing brought y'all together? That, you told me this story before, and I just love it, it's a great story.
Well, um, Cindy's first cousin, uh, and my current wife, Jan, they, they've been lifelong friends. Um, and so they would go down to Keaton Beach, and my place is there on the water, and so their place is not on the water, it's off the water. And so they would go down and, and they would call occasionally and say, hey, if y'all not there, can we park our boat at your dock? That way they didn't have to take it out every day.
Sure.
And so normally, Jan would call Cindy for that, for the, to ask that, that courtesy, and so I, I, I met Jan maybe passing one time, as they were coming out of the boat, because I was either fishing or working, I was always doing something. I seen her one time, uh, that I could even remember. Well, um, they would go, her and her brother and some friends were going down to Keaton, and so she was on her way down, not with them, but separately, and so she called Cindy's first cousin and says, have you, can you call Bill and see if we could park the boat at the dock? And he said, no, you call him. She said, I don't know how to get in touch with him, I don't have his number, I don't know nothing. He said, pull over, I'll give you the number. And so she, he made her pull over and, and gave him, gave her my cell number. So she ended up calling me about it, and then it just kind of began to. So she ended up calling me about it. And then it just kind of began to, that one phone call about, hey, can we park our boat at your dock? Ended up with a situation that way, uh, uh, that we began to date. Well, before that, another little cute, cute story is, is that we were down at Keaton Beach, Chad and I was, my oldest son, he was fishing. And so we were down there. Jan's brother and all was down there. Well, she was coming to meet them at the boat, you know, at the place, at their, my place. And so she came upstairs and, and Chad previously, we, we having a father and son conversation. He said, Dad, if you ever start dating or seeing anybody, he said, what, what kind of, what you looking for? I said, well, I don't know, but she's going to have to like fishing. So Jan comes up and she's just sitting over on the couch and she's kind of waiting on her brother to come in. And, and like I said, we had maybe passing that one time, just having a conversation. And Chad just, we were watching Auburn play. You know, Chad and his Auburn. And so we were watching them play football. And so Chad just all of a sudden just turns to Jan and says, Ms. Jan, do you like to fish? She says, she said, yeah, I love fishing. Chad, I took all I could do to just keep my composure together. He gets his grin and he just goes silent then.
He made his point.
Yeah, he made his point.
That's good.
So anyway, yeah, we, and, and then from that, and, and a few other little funny things. And we just, we began to communicate and it was slow, but we just began to just communicate. And the next thing we know, we began to realize we just had so much in common, you know? And we just couldn't, you know, and like I said, neither one of us were looking. We weren't shopping around. We, I had no clue. I didn't know how long I was going to go. If it might've been for the rest of my days. I just didn't know, you know, and had no idea. But she was such a wonderful lady and she came in at the right time in my life where I, I, I really needed, needed something. And I, I'm assuming it was the same with her, you know, it was just the right time. Um, some might would say, to be honest with you, some might would say it was quick and it was early, but that's not, we didn't plan it. God run that thing. God, I mean, what do you do? What do you do? Just say no?
When you know, you know.
Yeah. And, and that's the way it was, you know? And so anyway, it was, it really has been a blessing to me. It's made my life whole again. Where I had a big, huge hole in it. It's, it's put my life back together. And so now I'm, I'm moving forward. I'm extremely happy. Um, and my family, uh, they seem to, they seem to love her just fine. And she asked me, she said, what do I need to do so that your family will love me? I said, just be you. Just be you. I fell in love with you. They will too.
That's right.
Just be yourself.
That's how Chad started it.
So anyway, it, it's, I've been blessed. I really have. I, I tell folks all the time, there's just no way in the world that, that I, I, the hardest thing I have to understand and try to work through is, is why God has blessed me so well. It's hard to accept that because I hadn't been the perfect person that I need to be. And none of us are. And I could be a whole lot better than what I am. Um, but, but at the same time, I mean, just God's just, God, he's been good to me through my life from beginning to end.
I think we all three hold that in common.
I think so. You know, anybody that, anybody that has blessings in their life, uh, you have to understand and you have to have faith, be strong enough to understand that that's where your blessings come from.
That's right.
That's where they come from.
Yeah. You know, I want to close here in a second, I'm sure, but that where you were just going reminds me of, just a takeaway of, of your story so far. Your life highlights the fact that we are nothing but a vessel.
That's it.
And God wants to use us and bless us through that, right? It's not the blessings themselves. It's when we allow him to use us as a vessel, then from that obedience and surrender, we're blessed.
That's right.
Right? And so I would just suggest you're blessed because you've allowed him to use you.
Well, and, and I like to think the same thing. Uh, I, I don't challenge God to that type of situation, but
Careful what you ask.
Yes, sir. But bottom line is, is that I, I've always said, you know, good things come to good people. And as long as you continue to, to have your heart in the right place, um, and you want to continue to keep God in your life and keep your, keep your fellow man in your life and understand that everybody has challenges and we're all different in this world. But at the same time, we can all work together to make this community just exactly what we have right now, as good as it can possibly be.
Yeah. Well, he loves us and that's what we think. We do know. And we're all surprised by how much he loves us. Well, Bill, we want to, it's been great, man. This has been a wonderful time.
Yeah.
And, uh, well, we did get you something because today is your birthday.
Oh, no.
We'll, uh, we'll spare you the singing, right?
Yeah, do that.
We did get you some sweets for you.
Okay, well, great.
You and Ms. Jan to enjoy.
We'll do that. Well, thank you very much.
Happy birthday. Thank you for following your service to the community. Thank you for being a role model to a lot of us. And thank you for your friendship. We love you, man.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, that's, that's all we have at the end of the day is our friends.
Yeah, that's right.
That's all we got. So again, it's been my pleasure. I've enjoyed it.
Ours too. Let's do it again.
We'll do it.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.